We have a call meeting to order. Would you please hand in the going past the Brian hearing when we listen to her? Father, we just thank you so much for your hand of blessing on our city Harris in Arkansas. We pray that you would touch the leadership tonight, Lord, as they make the decisions concerning this great city, Lord. Give them wisdom and direction in your blessing name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board called the rule. James Harrison.
Present.
Joe Cox.
Present.
Dan Sherrill.
Present.
Johnny Savage.
Here.
Floyd Baltimore.
Present.
Wendell Stevens.
Present.
Dave Fitten.
Here.
Shannon Snow. You have the court. You who in your packets, you should have the copy of the June 28th and the July 9th special call council meeting minutes. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve in a second on the council minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Department reports. Do any department heads have anything they need to address the council with today, or does the council have any questions for the department heads?
I have asked our finance director if he would, at our committee meeting next month, put in this one six-month figure and kind of cover over a few things and see where we're at. And I'm going to ask Wade also if he'll cover the, of course, he's not here, but if he'll cover some of our infrastructure stuff at that meeting also. We'll get a little update on finances and our infrastructure.
Committee reports. Community Environment Services and Welfare.
No report, Mayor.
Finance Committee.
No, we have an item later on.
Internal Affairs.
No report, Mayor.
Public Safety.
No, no report.
Public Works and Transportation.
No report, Mayor.
Resources and Policy.
No report.
Ordinances and Resolutions. We had a resolution calling for election on the question of allowing the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises. We had been, we had received some advice that we should not pass that ordinance, and we are looking at that and also the sales tax ordinance, August, the second Thursday in August. As if we turn it in too early, there is some language in the law that provides that they may have to, if we were forced to, they may have to hold a special election instead of putting it on the November election. And to avoid the cost, the law states it's supposed to be turned in between 70 and 90 days before the election in order to get it on that general election ballot. If you turn it in earlier than that, there's some, I guess, gray area confusion in the statutes that may make them hold a special. Yes.
The timeframe that we're talking about is, there are several codes that refer to, most of them are for county ordinances, but some of our municipal league council and the Election Commission attorney seem to think that we need to be following it to, or cities need to be following it to. The other parameter seems to be that as long as we get it in before 45 days prior to the election, because that's when our county clerk has to send out absentee ballots, and we want it to be included in the packet going out. So not everybody is agreed on this. I've been aware of these things, but typically, you know, whether somebody ever raises it or not, the main objective is to get it in in time at least for the Election Commission to receive it, review it, approve it, give it to the clerk to put on the ballot. That's generally the rule, and of course, these can be challenged. We don't expect a challenge, but I agree with the information that has been advised to us, that to be safe, no more than 90 days prior to November 8th. And of course, what the minimum is, the 70-day rule is fine. We could wait until our August 28th regular meeting, but I suggested to the mayor that while we're going to be here for committee meetings the second Thursday in August, or assuming that we stick with our schedule, why not call a special meeting for that? And I'm recommending that while we're doing the alcohol issue, that we do the 1% tax at the same time and keep it in that same timeframe. So that's my recommendation. I think the mayor concurs with that.
We have an issue, the amending the current dog license ordinance to omit the license fees. It's been read once.
Make a motion, put it on a second reading.
Second.
By title only.
A motion in a second to place the ordinance on its second reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
An ordinance replacing City Code Section 6.04, Dogs and Cats of the Harrison City Code. Do you, if you want to go any further with it tonight?
I wanted to get this done tonight, didn't I?
I'm sorry, do I?
You wanted the dog ordinance resolved tonight, didn't you?
Yeah. However, before that, we get it resolved as quick as possible so we can start raising the fines. To do that, we would need a motion to suspend the rules and place it on its third meeting.
I'll make the motion to suspend the rules and put it on a third reading.
Second. By title only.
By title only.
I have a motion to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its third reading by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance replacing City Code Section 6.04, Dogs and Cats of the Harrison City Code. Do you all want?
Make a motion to, in that.
Emergency.
Emergency, adopt.
Adopt.
Adopt. Is that what you did?
So adopt, is that the next one?
Second.
Well, a motion to, well, yeah, to adopt would be next.
Have a motion to adopt the emergency clause in a second.
No, we're adopting the ordinance.
Adopt the ordinance, okay.
He's correct.
Motion to adopt in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now, we could use the emergency.
I'll make a motion to enact the emergency clause.
Second.
Have a motion to enact the emergency clause in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Parks and Recreation Trail Grant Resolutions. Cindy, did you want to address that, or?
Well, I can answer any questions. I think Mr. Sherrill has.
Okay.
Appreciate me making that motion, yeah. We had talked about this, well, it's been several months ago, I guess now, but we have two grants here, and they have to be, the resolution has to be approved so they can, I guess, apply for the grant. And one of them is an 80-20, and the other one is a 50-50, I believe.
What it says?
And the total, the total cost, I don't know if you all got these figures or not, but the total cost on the 80-20 is $99,615. Their contribution be $79,000, and the city contribution almost $20,000, $19,923.
And is it, can that be in kind?
In kind.
A lot of it in kind.
Yeah. A lot of it.
Well, it's not all in kind, let's put it that way. What I've got here is $12,450, which being administration and engineering cost, and $7,473 of cash. And now, most of that, even that total of 19 or 20,000 dollars will be in kind. Wade's not here, he could probably give us a closer amount of what he will be doing, what the city will be doing. But that first one there that I covered is an 80-20, and that's also one resolution. And I make a motion to adopt the 80-20 resolution.
Second. A motion in a second to adopt the 80-20 resolution on the trails grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, if you look there, we all go to another resolution, which is a 50-50 grant. And that one, the total project is $42,325. State contribution, $21,162. Cities, same, $21,162. And that's broken down by $5,200 administration and engineering cost, and they got down here $15,872 being in-kind construction and cash.
How much in kind again?
$15,872.
Is that in kind and cash?
In kind and cash, and again, that cash figure could be up or down, as far as, I don't know what all Wade has in his store to work on.
Cindy, do you have any more breakdown on what we're probably looking at?
The overall, the last thing Wade said to me was that if we were fortunate enough to get awarded both grants, the total cash of the city would be around 16,000.
Total?
For, right, for a return of about $145,000 worth of trail.
I think hopefully, we can probably knock that down some more, too.
Yeah.
If we do a lot more construction, earthwork is going to be the biggest thing, probably. And if the city can do a lot of that, we'll probably knock that down some more.
Both of these grants are for the same trails?
Two different projects.
Right.
Two different projects, but they're both for trails.
One of, the first one we did was a Rod Jordan Trail. And this 50-50 grant is for the Woodland Heights Nature Trail. I'll make a motion, we accept the resolution on the 50-50 grant.
Second. Have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution on the 50-50 grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Wayfinding signage. We had a meeting with CATPC this morning. The CATPC has approved 24 locations, I think total, well, it was close to 50 signs, was it? Forty-some signs?
It's 20, actually, it's 24 signs, I believe, there.
I thought they had 24 locations on that.
14.
Yeah. 14 intersections. Approximately 21,000 cost. The CATPC has approved payment of that $21,000 worth of cost. The in-kind labor will be provided by the city for approximately $14,305. And these are the signs behind us that they'd approved. The big one will go on the bypass, that's required, that size lettering for the higher speed traffic, and the smaller ones will go on the other roadways throughout town. Industrial Park Road, Airport Road, some places along there. And they should be installed, Wade thinks, by the end of the year. He'll get them ordered now that CATPC has approved the funding, and get them installed by the end of the year.
CATPC is going to contribute $21,000, yes?
Yes. They'll pay for the cost of the signs and the posts and.
Basically, they're paying cash, and the city's going to provide the labor.
Provide labor.
That's cheaper than I, Wade and I had a visit last week, and I thought it was going to be considerably more than that for that next sign.
Yes, yeah, he got to cut down, buying them all at once, they gave us a quantity break, and he got to cut down to that, so.
Okay.
Through the work they did bidding it out, and a lot of them out, but it was approved this morning, so. New business, we have a mobile home at Eagle Heights discussion that Floyd had brought up, and I think Ralph has issued a ticket on that.
I visited with Van before tonight's meeting, and there is a little bit of an issue on its time allotted, and Van's going to address that. He would go forward with it, Van, I appreciate it.
Okay. I think the inspection that's been made so far is under the fire code, and it's been on the books for some time. It's a state code, and it apparently gives a 10-day notice to the owner of the property, whereas the damaged and unsafe structure portion of our Clean Premises Code that we passed less than a year ago, pages two and three of that code cover unsafe structures. Our code requires a 30-day notice, the idea being to give the owner at least a reasonable amount of time to assess the problem, and if the owner wants to, to remedy the problem by repairs and spending money. Of course, the other option would be is that the owner tears it down. This procedure that is outlined, and it's, we were fairly careful when we set this up, to set out the procedure. I think it's a new one, it's the first time that our code staff have dealt with a structure that we were going to be pretty much in the direction of asking that it be removed or torn down. And I think the procedure is new to our code inspectors, to Ralph Jones and Jeremy. And I told Ralph this morning that I would get into it sometime today, in which I finally got a chance this afternoon to pull our code up, and I haven't had a chance to get back to them, but it's my intention to assist them in getting the right notice out. It will need to be a 30-day notice. The follow-up on that is, after that, if the owner has not taken care of the problem, it'll come back to this council to consider a resolution for removing the structure. And if the council passes that, the owner has another 30 days in which to take care of it himself or to appeal our resolution. And if no response after that time period, then the city can either tear it down or take bids for a contractor or someone privately to take it down. And then we go through the process of taking a lien against the property and ultimately liquidating that lien by selling the property, first to get our money back, and any remainder then would go to the owner. Of course, at that point in time, all we would have to sell would be the vacant lot. But our procedure is in pretty good detail on these third and fourth page of our Clean Premises Code, and if any of you, I do have three or four extra copies here, if any of you don't have that handy or would like to have a copy of it here.
The way this all started out was, we had a complaint from the neighbor of this piece of property about some people, I used to call them vagrants, going in there and sleeping and stuff like that, and they were concerned about that. The building's been basically, I think it was 2007 when this, when it first burnt, and we've had, we've never did a formal, I guess, like we're doing today as far as filing the formal complaint against them.
I'm not aware of any. I know that we have mowed it a few times.
Yeah, we've mowed it, and we've contacted this individual on more than one occasion about the condition of it, and that they had basically ignored the city and let the property continue to be just the condition it was when it first burnt, and the neighbor's concerned, and so they filed a complaint basically with Ralph, and so.
I think it's a good one for us to at least look at and follow the procedure, and this will, will get our code section, code people down to where, I think, from here on, we'll set the procedure that fits the new code that we put in.
Is this, this mobile home here, is that what we're talking here?
Yes.
About the mobile home?
Yes.
Is that the address? What is the address on that?
It's East Washington.
725 East Washington.
725, okay, that's the one we have in our packet here, that we're coding.
Yes, right.
Yes, that is it.
How many mobile homes does this gentleman have?
I don't know.
More than one.
He has a few rental properties that I think they're all pretty much being neglected and have them for some time. I've talked to him about it, but I don't know that he's able to respond.
Well, I notice we're cleaning 10 properties. We're cleaning 10 of his properties. I've got the list right here.
As far as mowing and?
Yes.
Yes, he's in his 90s, I believe, and, yeah.
I'd say this, this is the one to start on.
Have you, you say you've talked to him?
I've talked to him two or three times, and never had any satisfaction that he was going to do anything.
Not his shit.
I'm not sure that he understands what we're requesting. I think it's.
He has no, he has no anybody to take care of him.
There is a granddaughter out of town that we have, I think I have contact information for her somewhere.
Kind of see a change reaction here starting, I'm afraid.
Yeah, well.
Like I say, has it got to start something?
It probably needs, probably needs to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you want to discuss that 30-day proposal? Yes, I'd be glad to.
Van had an item he wanted to bring to your attention that we've been discussing since municipal league meeting.
Did you? Yes, so when we go to Hot Springs and Little Rock for municipal league and take the classes there, we're supposed to learn something, and after attending for about 10 years, I did pick up something that I want to pass on and recommend to this council. We deal with the emergency clause quite often here, and sometimes it gets in our way of getting things going because it does require a two-thirds vote. The municipal league staff pointed out to city attorneys in this last group of meetings that it is available to a city to reduce the 91-day effectiveness of an ordinance to a 30, oh, 31-day effective time. And that struck me as something that we ought to consider here because, as I said, we either waste or seem to be considering these things quite a lot. There was a little history given by the attorney that presented this, saying that 50 years or so ago, when we were developing our codes for cities and counties, the communication abilities back then required extra time. In other words, most of the people were agricultural, like farmers or whatever, and that the reason for using 90 days before an ordinance was effective was to be sure that it got disseminated and people had a chance to react to it. Apparently, a few cities in Arkansas have already passed this and put it into effect. Two or three of them that spoke up said they were very pleased with it. It seemed to eliminate a lot of delay issues and a lot of technical issues in getting things passed to where they were going to effect. I think the proper time, I guess, for us to consider these things is through committees would be our next meeting, two weeks from now, in early August. I just wanted to throw it out, and I will see that it's in the packet if you all would like to see that it's, I'll get it to Floyd to get it in the packet to allow you all, if you want to do any conversation about this, but I would recommend that we consider voting on it as soon as you all are ready to, at, say, our August meeting, to see about putting that into effect. It will solve some procedural problems for us, I think. Is this by ordinance or resolution? This would be by ordinance. It has to be done by ordinance.
Threaten act of emergency.
Unless you want to wait 90 days.
It seems, I didn't, I didn't notice the emergency clause to be, you know, that big an issue in years past. Dan, you've been on the council, but all of a sudden, it seems like, you know, maybe we're trying to do a lot more new things than we used to, and maybe it's just the circumstances, but it wasn't too important in the past, but it must be an issue that other cities have run into, and procedurally, I highly recommend it that we get it considered and into effect.
This is, in all actuality, it looked like you're just dropping the emergency clause, right?
Well, no.
It's not, but I mean.
We have to allow at least the 30-day time period, and the reason for that is, is that all ordinances of any city have a 30-day time period at which if some citizen is agreed by it, they can start an action in 30 courts, or circuit court. The 30 days is the cutoff time for appealing or dissenting from the action of this council. So we're kind of stuck with the 30-day and the 31st day, the way the ordinance that I have, I've prepared one for consideration. We have to, it's effective on the 31st day. The first 30 days are still a waiting period.
Discuss that at committee meeting in two, in a couple of weeks.
If that's your pleasure, I'll sure be glad to do that.
One last thing that I'd like to bring up on our new business. We had a lady come to us and about the Maple Insurance property that was the JW Moore property that was quitclaim to the city. We toured the house down there, and Buildings and Grounds has been maintaining that lot. We had a lady come in that thought she would like to see a park there. She has agreed to, as long as we will decide to allow it, and I would like a motion to allow it, she has agreed to donate a cost of around $18,000, about $13,000 worth of playground equipment, and about $5,000 worth of fencing, because we didn't feel that there should be a playground there without fencing the kids from running into the street. Expected completion date would be around 9:30 September 30th. She would like the city to pay for the cost of a drinking fountain, which Public Works has estimated at around $500.
At $2,500.
Is it $2,500? Okay. To put a drinking fountain in, and a cost for a tree, a flowering tree there by the benches, about $200. This was the Woolley family, Mary, Monte, Josh, and Daniel Woolley. It's a memorial for her parents, Charles and Elizabeth Bland, and she would like the park to be named Bland Memorial Park. And like I said.
Maintain.
Pardon?
We continue to maintain.
Yes, we're maintaining it anyway.
Are we going to, is there going to be a plaque or something put up there?
She's going to put that, a bust and a plaque.
Bust.
In the memorial area in the corner, and she selected approximately six to seven playground equipment, swings, Peter Todd, or things like that.
And we will install them.
City will install them.
Yes.
We can get donations on a tree and a water fountain?
We might, not from her.
Right, right, right.
She asked for us to provide that, she's provided.
We've got some locals that would probably.
I think it'd be an asset for the neighborhood. I think that that's, you know, with her making that kind of donation, I think that's something we ought to accommodate, and.
And we don't normally get 16, 17,000 dollar donations.
I would entertain a motion to.
Approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the park proposal for Maple Insurance.
Ask a question, please.
Yeah.
The Buildings and Grounds going to take care of this?
They have been. They have been.
They won't be turned over to the parks.
We, Parks takes care of what they take care of, and they never want to take care of anything else, so I doubt it'll be turned over to Parks. Even though it's a park, it's not a park, you know?
Well, it's a memorial.
So, but yeah. Buildings and Grounds has been taking care of it, and I assume that they would continue to take care of it.
That's great.
Great.
If no one wants to, I'll seek out the $200 tree, see if I can get somebody to run it.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that's all I have for this evening. Anybody else have a comment or anything else they want to bring up?
The crosswalk sign up here by the school, did we put that up?
I think we did.
Double times, yeah.
Can we put some of those down here by the school?
Somebody asked about Highway 7. Wade is checking with the highway department. That is state highway, so we have to have approval from them before we can do that.
I was just thinking, there's a lot of other places. I was thinking, there's a lot of other places that we could use those.
Yes, yes.
Very good idea.
And that school area, because I mean...
They're on the swing.
Yeah.
Yep, and they are.
They're pretty fixed.
Were you running over them, Joe?
No, not I.
There's been much in the Allisonville.
A question on Hoops and Home Runs.
Yes. Just a question.
There's a building right in there?
The question is, well, apparently, the owner of Hoops and Home Runs is doing better at least about keeping it mode and trimmed, but we've had it looked at by our code inspector several times this year, and Mr. Wilson seems to be keeping up with that. Our fire code inspection is not getting any assistance that I know of.
Very limited on that.
And...
He's done a little bit, but not...
I know Mark has inspected it, and I think Mark and I need to get together to make sure that we are citing him correctly. He needs to be cited on that and put him into the procedure of taking him through the court process, this time with a little less leniency and with a little tighter procedural approach.
The problem is, is it's just basically sitting there, and it's just like it's been for the last 15 years.
Yes, it's sitting there with a dumpster in front of it that got used a couple of times, but it's not been, I guess, used in at least two months now. But I guess that's a token sign of cooperation, but it's not solving the problem of the interior issues.
I guess I would just encourage us to maybe update at each one of the council meetings on this, please.
One of the differences in that one and say, the property that we looked at in Eagle Heights a few minutes ago is the cost of the demolition. There is at least one lien existing against the Hoops and Home Runs property, and that lien limits the city to how much priority we can take. Unless the number is changed, we can take about $7,500 of priority over a lien by giving notices, but as I recall, when we investigated this issue, we were looking at $100,000, so as a practical matter, there wasn't any way we could be assured of getting our money back. But Phil Wilson always insists that he has a plan and he's going to do something with the property, which I don't know that that has merit, but I think what we'll have to do is start with our code violations again and take that to task, and at least we don't have to deal with the clean premises part of it now.
Any other business? entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Bill, you have it?
This program is brought to you as a public service of KTKO Channel 8, Harrison.